And you're live now.
Thank you.
Board of Supervisors meeting at the board, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the adoption of the agenda and I know that we have some changes to that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The only changes are under item thirteen calendar. And I am requesting that you strike item thirteen A. That was for an underground utility easement on Marquee Road. Related to broadband and I've since learned that that easement is not required. Item thirteen B can remain as the planning commission did take action and forward a recommendation on that item. But thirteen C for the beverage SUP and thirteen D for the text amendment related to private road standards should be struck from the agenda as well. The planning commission did not make a recommendation and forward to the E board at this time.
Well, that's very well. That is actually A and M auto.
Yes, A and M auto. Um, yes, it was originally done by the beverages. Sorry, but it is the expansion for A and M auto. Lastly, I'd like to request that you add item thirteen E. Just got approval after consulting with the county attorney this afternoon. We've got an additional request for an underground utility easement from Rappahannock Electric Co-op. For um, to provide power to a new residence. And their underground line has to cross a piece of county owned property. In order to get to the new residence. So that is at the corner of Rosemary Drive and Constitution Highway. This action would just schedule the public hearing and then we would do the appropriate advertisements.
Alright, very good. Uh, that would be an amended agenda. Striking thirteen A, C, and D. And adding thirteen E, underground Rappahannock Electric easement. Roads and Constitution.
Yes, sir.
Any other changes or additions or deletions?
Motion to approve is modified.
Second?
Second.
Fall in favor? Aye. Alright, next is special presentations and appearances. So wandering down there, do you have anything to say, Mr. Voorhees?
Mr. Chairman, it's always exciting when someone retires from, from public service. For them, but also for us because it gives us a chance to acknowledge them and their commitment to serving the public. But I'm afraid I'm gonna have no way of acknowledging the importance of this in comparison to you because this person has some relationship to you that I'll, I'll let you focus on.
Gee, thanks. Put me in the hot seat. Barbara Crozier, would you please come forward?
And that's the only time you've ever said that to her.
Oh, she wants to stand on my left. Can you stand on my right, please?
Just some color?
Yeah.
Alright, certificate of appreciation. County of Orange presents this certificate to Barbara Crozier. And wishes to express its sincere thanks and gratitude for her twenty-one years of dedicated service. Her wisdom and commitment have inspired many and will be remembered for years to come. We wish her good health, happiness, and success in her retirement. Signed, James P. Crozier, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. And apparently I should have read this thing beforehand so I could change some wording. Here you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have to pose for the pictures. And we truly do appreciate.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
Alright, very well. Uh, next is our lead up update, quarterly report. Alan.
Sir. Chairman Crozier, members of the board here. I am here tonight for your quarterly update and I also have a smart scale review. Hope you had a really great meeting with Administrator Voorhees and his team to go over smart scale and planning for the next round. So first, Ms. Simpson, I will go through the quarterly update. Alright, so I'll read directly from just a quick review. On page one, we are going to go over smart scale in a few minutes and I've got a brief to share with you. We jump right into your projects, Route six thirty-five Greenwood Road Bridge project over Norfolk Southern Railroad. That project's almost finished. The contractor is mobilizing out and we need to do some work on the guardrail on the northern approach and that will wrap up. Route six oh two, it's good that we're marching on the west side of six ninety-two. And we'll, we'll also be hard surfacing soon as the aggregate consolidates and we're gonna continue to work on that for the rest of the year. So it'll be good to bang that one out. Matthews Mill crews are out there, contractors out there replacing culverts. And they, they were out there all week and went by there yesterday with a couple of the citizens. And that one's going really well if the weather holds. We're gonna make a lot of progress on Matthews Mill Road and try to push it over to the north side later this year. Route six oh one, the low speed curve, we're still evaluating the hydraulics on that. Still trying to keep the project within the existing right away footprint there. So that design is still marching ahead.
What do you mean by hydraulic design?
Initially, we were realigning the curve. And all of the waters draining to the inside east of six oh one.
Okay.
And now we're gonna try to keep the project within the footprint, reduce the impermeable area and reduce the need for the stormwater management P and P. So yeah, we're in that hydraulic design portion.
Stormwater.
Right, that's driving it. The thirty-three twenty roundabout in Barbersville, the design for that is marching forward. So it's good to see that one's coming along pretty quickly. The survey is underway, so the property owners will begin to seek notifications that will be out in the area on there. Along the right away, they'll see states and other things. If you hear any concerns or questions, please route those our way. Researching schedule is also well underway. We're working through the west end of the county. And we have notified a couple of business owners out there that we're coming, but if you hear any feedback from them, please listen. On page.
What, what is, I'm looking at the twenty-twenty-one, it's substantially less. Is that, is that, we're just, what we're talking about progress so far or is that the, is the allocation dropped considerably?
The allocation's dropped considerably.
Okay.
It has.
So that, that sixteen miles is the, is what we're gonna do for the whole year?
It is.
Wow, okay.
It's not just us. Just about everybody. It sure is. The funding for research is very limited. And on the one hand, it's a good sign that our roads are in better condition than others who are receiving more funding. But it also is still, if you can find some lemonade out of those ones.
Alright, so, okay. So it's based upon allocating, across the state, allocating how much, how much need you have for it?
Yes, sir.
As opposed to new projects or other projects?
Right.
Okay.
On page three, traffic engineering studies. For the studies under review, please always look at those and let us know if we've missed something. But I did wanna give you a quick update on the Constant Manor, the left turn lane from Route fifteen into Constant Manor. That is something that we received a pavement marking diagram for and we're gonna go ahead and schedule that work. I'm gonna send something to the town and make sure that they're okay with it, but we've been working with them for that for about a year. So we've got a design and that shouldn't, right now, there's a lot of folks queuing up behind left turning traffic on Route fifteen before they get to Inwood. And this will give them dedicated storage to be able to turn left there. So that's, that's one that we've been working on for a while. We did just see the gateway signs in the middle from the consultants and I'm glad that that's back. We're going to be evaluating that relative to the right away and we'll respond as quickly as possible. The Route six fifty-five Jacksonville Road Study, they've wrapped that up and we are recommending a reduction for that on the full length.
How about that Route three entrance on Tulakaloo Woods? Has that meeting been scheduled yet?
We held that meeting.
Okay.
About ten days ago and that was a really good meeting.
Okay.
And we met with Phil Roenberg and his crew.
Yeah.
And walked through several ideas about improving traffic in the main gate. Including smart scale that's coming and applying for funding for the improvements along the main line. We also talked about second entrance. They shared the Welford Study. And that is something that we're gonna follow up with them to review. One of the things that we committed to do was to participate in a public forum there at Lake of the Woods, however you would like to do that. Virtually or in person. Again, talking about some of their concerns, what Welford has proposed. And also the, the restricted crossing U-turn intersection concepts to begin socializing that.
When is that scheduled for?
It's not.
Please ensure I'm popping on that.
But we're, we're looking forward to that. We had a good discussion with them.
Okay.
And then six eighteen Taylorville Road, that one's in the queue for review. So traffic engineer is gonna do a speed study. They're gonna evaluate the signage on the full length all the way to the town line.
Okay.
And look, there's some inconsistency on six fifty-seven as well that they're gonna look at. So those are the speed studies. On page four, I did wanna note Route six thirty-five, the Jonesville Road pavement place up at the top. We should be doing that this week if we're at a point.
One.
Not within the next two weeks. So it'd be good to get that typed up and get them out of dust.
Yes.
And A and K Boulevard, I do have an update on A and K Boulevard. We are gonna meet with the property owner on the east side of Twin Drive next week and walk through those requirements. We split it up. Part of it's going to Walmart, part of it's going to them.
Okay.
And I think that will help expedite the approval and acceptance of that. And I always wanna highlight the area headquarters in Gordonsville and Roseville. They're the real heroes that do all the work. One thousand seventy-eight work orders so far this year. Those guys are really hot. Through the heat, COVID, everything else, they keep pushing ahead. Gentlemen, that's all I've got.
I have a two-year safety studies, the five twenty-two. Basically six fifty down to six twenty-nine, Independence down to La Jolla. Is there any progress being made on looking at that in terms of what can be done? I didn't see it on the list, at least I didn't pick it out.
It's noted, it's noted in the report, but they're, they're still evaluating that. They're looking at the full length from twenty all the way down south below six fifty. From the flashing beacon, the passing zones, the signage, sight distance improvements at both six twenty-nine, six fifty intersections moving north. And then this speeds on itself. And I'm not sure what the outcome's gonna be from that, but at least we're looking at it. The crash pattern there at six fifty now, thankfully not enough injury crashes to get the list that we're about to talk to, smart scale. But it's, it's easing up there. It will be there before too long. Your options there for improving apart from bulldozers on the top of the hill valley.
That's a problem. My site from six fifty is very short, especially happened to be in that area about six thirty, I guess it was on Sunday. And fortunately, I was just going straight across. I was thinking while I was sitting, I'm glad I didn't need to turn left, just in my case to go north. Because it was, there must have been two hundred cars that were just waiting to creep over the top of that hill. And it was, it was late traffic. You know, they're, they're ready to get home, towing boats, trying to make grades and all those kinds of things. So it's a, it's a difficult situation, especially when the activity at the latest.
It is. We've had many constituents talk about it. We have, we received a letter from one constituent that her husband, I guess he's still in hospital from an accident they had down there. Just, it's an ongoing thing and I know you all are doing what you can, but it, it is really bad. The traffic since.
It also kind of ties in with the intersection of twenty and five twenty-two. Of course, I know a lot of it's seasonal, a lot of it's weekend, especially holidays, but we're seeing traffic backed up to almost a mile both ways. In some rate.
On five twenty-two.
Yeah, intersection. And I, I think a lot of it could be the lights aren't quite synchronized. There's, there's a lot of times you let traffic go one way but not the other. But seriously, there's been traffic backed up to a mile both ways.
That, that whole stretch is just, it's primarily lake related traffic. And some of these things would be the worst case, at least from what I've seen. People tend to go either September in the day, Friday, or Friday evening, or Saturday morning, so it spreads out southbound.
But it does seem that the rest will be getting worse to each year.
Sunday, yeah.
Especially some of these drivers do.
Well, thank you for sharing that, though. We're typically not out there on Sundays unless there's crash or something. So that is something that we can look at. At least the timing during peaks to, most of that traffic is going to move north. Right now, it has protected turns and that stops all of the intersection just for those limited laps. In maybe a circumstance where they can.
But I have seen traffic backed up on the north side trying to go south too, or at least half mile to a mile.
Yeah, it's both ways.
Yes, but just step both ways.
But we do appreciate everything you're doing and hopefully it can help us. Solutions.
I see where you have a roundabout somewhat proposed out into the future. Does that help with traffic flow or what is your, what's your take on that?
It does. Within the traffic volumes that we're seeing at that intersection, a roundabout's a great solution.
It is.
And we've seen in Pluvana County at the intersection of fifteen to fifty-three, two very busy primary routes, truck traffic, buses. The crash history that we had prior to the roundabout was very high. And the crashes have been very limited since then over the last three years. And that's one intersection that I like to point to because it's on Route fifteen and it has a lot of traffic. So it, it is a good solution. Up to a certain point, traffic gets over twenty-five thousand vehicles, its effectiveness becomes limited. But the traffic certainly in Gordonsville, nineteen forty-eight.
Always done that work very well.
Right. It's still working.
It is.
So I think that they're a good solution.
Yeah.
Especially for safety.
Yeah.
But we will look at that and I think it would be better to. Daniel Jean is our district traffic engineer, signal engineer. And we may try to figure out how to get out there on Sunday. Or Friday too, Friday evening or Sunday and try to just watch that, see what the facing can do because they can tweak that. And a few seconds each way. But we'll check that out.
Thank you very much, Alan.
Yes, sir. Alan, I've noticed a few spots on thirty-three where a section of pavement is kind of dilapidated. You got a, you got a section that's maybe two foot by twenty foot at the edge of the pavement that's just gone. I mean, the, you know, the top two inches or whatever is, is, do you have somebody out looking at those things? Is that something that you're gonna be patching soon? One of them is, one of them is right, right across the road from the tire shop basically. You know, sort of in front of the trail, it's a gap or across the way there. But particularly big trucks hit it and you can, you know, it's you can, you can tell every time somebody hits it because it's, but big trucks are pretty near the rap.
Will follow, will follow up on?
Yeah. I, I meant to mention, I took you the other day when you dropped by and I just.
Interesting. I thought that was a market employed by the tire company.
A little too close to the shop.
If you had any of those specific locations that we missed, it would come for a patch.
Okay.
The latex slurries dilapidating, but it's probably worse to get in there and peel it up and come back over and patch it.
Any other questions? Alan, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Always a pleasure to sit here. Alright, next is consent agenda. Motion to approve.
I'd like to make comment on that. Yes, to do with where the county buys its petroleum. I've always been a big proponent of buy local. I'm just wondering if we could open that up for some of our local businesses.
So you're talking about item D?
I am talking about the copper petroleum southern states.
Ma'am, would you like to address it?
Well, what I would suggest we do is remove that from the consent agenda, go ahead and adopt consent agenda and then discuss.
My motion is to approve the consent agenda with that item removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Alright, Amanda. Or not Amanda, it's done. Item, item D of the original consent agenda is renewal of the contract for petroleum, petroleum. Had Amanda's name now.
I'm still getting through this issue. I mean, yes, we do bid this contract out. And it's usually for one year with four one-year renewals, which are what all of our contracts are. And even that we've never received a local bid.
Really aware that they have an opportunity to bid?
It's in the paper. It also is posted on the state website and the county website. And we have text and email blasts that go out to everyone who has signed up on our bidders list.
So how many bid in twenty nineteen?
I don't have the information in front of me that I can get it to. It's on our website. I can email it to you. It's all public.
Any other questions?
Do you want to deal with that or just leave it?
I would leave it. I would like to make inquiry to people if they would like to bid, make sure that they do have that option.
Are we good timewise as far as still being provided for services?
We usually do the renewals because.
Yeah, we have two weeks.
Okay, I don't think that's something we're gonna be able to deal with and I.
Is it set for early Monday? It's going to be here, yeah, prior to the next meeting.
I have to publicly post it for ten days and.
You know which renewal this is? Is this, is this year two or three?
I think it's the second. I believe it's the second.
So maybe perhaps before the next time this one year renewals up, we could open that up.
Absolutely. Yeah, they're one, they're one year contracts.
One year contracts, yeah.
So that is always possible.
We need a little more advanced notice on that.
Yes.
And the reason this was such short notice is they were bought out and it's what we were given.
Okay. Alright, very good.
Then I would move to approve item four D.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post.
I'll leave it up for a minute, Mr. Marshall, to read it three or three.
Okay. Thank you very much, Stephen. Right, next is mid business. Five A is consideration for kind of spending plan for American Rescue Plan Act. Ms. Bradley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Back in May of twenty twenty-one, the US Department of Treasury announced the launch of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Which was part of the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. And it provided three hundred and fifty billion in emergency funding for eligible state, local, territorial, and tribal governments. As you know, Orange County was awarded approximately seven point two million in that. And we did appropriate funds as part of our FY twenty-two budget. That amount was later refined by about ten thousand dollars. So that the total amount is about one, seven million one hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. The first half of that was received on June twenty-second by the treasurer, which was approximately three and a half million dollars. As with the CARES Act funds, the county administration had proposed a preliminary spending plan for a portion of the funds. And that was in your packet. There are a number of projects that we would like the board to consider. The categories were determined by the Treasury Department. Tried to fit our projects into those categories for reporting purposes. I think the first round of reporting is due August thirty-first. But we did have three different projects in the public health area for a total of one point two million. The largest one of those is completion of the Berryville Fire and Rescue Station. It would complete the renovation of the Bay Area and ventilation. And a lot of it is concentrated on reducing percentages for the staff. We also had a couple of projects under the negative economic impact category. And that included a comprehensive economic development strategy that would be a partnership through RRC. And also to do a small business revolving loan program through using CIC. As you know, we did some grants through CIC with our CARES Act funding, but this would be a loan program. So the interest earnings would go back into the fund to be loaned out again. We also had one project that we felt might qualify for the services to disproportionately impacted communities. And that was a contribution to the Boys and Girls Club. That would be for forty-nine, nine ninety-nine, just to come under the fifty thousand dollar threshold. Because that requires a lot more reporting on the super city vans that we have. So broadband construction, as you are aware, we have reclassified it to two million dollars. That was originally a loan to be part of this ARPA spending. And that will be reported as first mile delivery broadband service. And then under revenue replacement, there is a formula that we're allowed to use that projects theoretical loss revenue due to the pandemic. And it actually uses a growth rate of four point one percent, which is really larger than what we've typically seen here in Orange County. So when using that formula for the calendar year twenty, we would qualify for about five point six million in revenue loss. We have proposed projects that we'd like to take up that category for three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And this is just for things like two passenger vans for childcare sites. They're having trouble getting access to school buses and school bus drivers because there's a shortage of those. So this will allow them to have reliable transportation, be able to plan better for their field trips and so forth. The county website, an update of that, digital engagement and public sentiment tracking. The library has a number of projects, include a third party mobile app and additional hotspots and additional digital content for the citizens and taken programming. And then the organizational development and wellness position. Oh, and that, that one, we decided to, to fund out of this when we reviewed the health insurance fund. So that would just be for one year. Hopefully our health insurance fund will have recovered sufficiently that we can then begin to program that into our annual budget. But at any rate, that, those are identified projects of three point eight million, leaving three point three in other projects. And I think the next item on your agenda will go into some other projects in more detail that we would like the board to consider. But this would be the, the beginning of a spending plan for these ARPA funds.
Does the approval of this plan constitute the appropriation? Do we have to do that? Will we have to do that separately?
The appropriation was actually done as part of the FY twenty-two budget adoption.
And then a question is, but you're gonna discuss it next, where the resiliency program fits into this?
Yes, the, Jimmy will be discussing the next item, I believe. And so out of the remaining funds, the three point three million, the resiliency program would come out of that.
That's about one point four million out of that.
Okay. She'll go into detail on that.
Further questions for one? Be the motion to approve this. I believe that's what you're looking for, isn't it?
Right.
Is there a second? Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Houses unanimous.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, the next one is a consideration for the competitive spending plan for ARPA funds, public safety resources.
Good afternoon. Good to see you all. I will piggyback off of the information from the just presented. So encompassed in the ARPA funding, as Mr. Crane said, we're looking at about one point four million with an initiative to develop and implement a. um, with an initiative to develop and implement a resiliency program specifically for our sheriff's office, fire EMS, E91, and social services departments. Two additional initiatives within that funding, um, is a community care medicine program and a paramedic training program. And we'll talk on those in just a few moments. I do want to quickly note that, uh, the leaders from the organizations I just mentioned are here with us this afternoon to assist in answering the questions, um, we may have, or you all may have regarding the vision for the program. Um, the purpose of the resiliency program is to provide an abundance of resources and education in areas such as mental health, safety, and physical fitness for those identified groups. This would create an opportunity to add to our portfolio of employee benefits and assist with recruitment and retention efforts for these specific groups, as well as aid us in becoming an employer of choice. I believe that, as I've done more and more research, uh, with resiliency programs, um, I believe that through the pandemic, these last 18 months or so, a greater level of awareness has been created as we have the same tireless work that these groups have, have managed and that they have to live day in and day out, and that a dedicated support system should be available to those groups. There's also perception or an expectation, uh, that employees in these positions are to be destroyed and resilient. Um, but they see and experience trauma and violence unlike others. So creating a space for resources that are readily available to support them will be, is critical. And currently, we do not have any neighboring localities that have embarked on this work. So I think this is really an exciting time for us to become a regionally situated leader or pioneer. Um, here, we do have colleagues to the north in Fairfax, um, and the southeast in Virginia Beach that have dedicated programs for these groups. Um, I have spoken with their HR leaders and they have expressed high accolades for the work that they have done. They have seen a reduction in on-the-job injuries. Um, and they have also helped to de-stigmatize the request for mental health support. Their employees feel safer coming forward, asking for help, and creating that dialogue. We believe that through the implementation of this resiliency program, Orange County can and will be deemed an employer that has a dedicated focus around the well-being of physical and mental, um, for these organizations. For the community care medicine program, um, that would be spearheaded by our fire EMS team. Um, the goal would be to reduce the amount of non-emergent 911 calls while providing support to the demographic that utilizes 911 and emergency rooms as their primary care physicians. We would implement a two-week, uh, rotate, on a two-week rotational basis, visits to connect with the folks in this population. Resources and education would be provided to this group using partnerships with our local health department and our primary care providers locally. This would be a data-driven effort where the patient care record system would be accessed to identify the frequent users of the 911 system. And we would anticipate a reduction in 911 calls from this specific population, along with creating space for our four medic units to assist in true emergency situations. For our paramedic training program, the county currently operates for advanced life support slash medic stack ambulances. Over the last several months, we have experienced extreme difficulty in recruiting and hiring seasoned medics. Through this initiative, the county would be able to offer an in-house paramedic training program to successfully train and certify our EMTs as medics. Through this effort, we would be able to closely manage and measure the success of our participants, along with having the autonomy and selecting the instructors, which will ultimately provide more awarding learning experience for our staff. We also anticipate seeing an increase in recruitment and retention by providing a clear, um, career progression at the onset of employment. The paramedic class is the only EMS certification that we are not able to offer in-house as it is an accredited program. And attached to your memo, you have the chart, um, for the proposed expenditures, uh, for these initiatives. And so lastly, you know, we hope that through your consideration and approval of the proposed initiatives, that we can create a culture of well-being for those that put so much on the line to care for our citizens and those that pass through our community. And what I'd like to do is like to open up to my colleagues that are here with me tonight to see if they have any additional thoughts that they'd like to share.
If we could, Jenny, I'd like to break this down into three different sections.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the first one being the resiliency.
Yes, sir.
Where, where would these debriefings or whatever, where would they be held?
Me.
The, uh, a, as far as the, um, the counseling or whatever, where would that actually be offered?
With me employees?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, perfect question. And so we would, um, the goal is to hire a program manager to oversee this entire program. So they would be able to coordinate those efforts. Um, we would hope that maybe through the space of the public safety building, we would have some space to do that. Um, outside therapy or counseling sessions would be utilized through the resources that we partner with. So we could have a, a state and private space for that to happen.
So, so we would be, uh, contracting with the counselors, uh, for people who need it? And, and you have one employee who sort of manages that whole system?
Essentially, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we would, we would create a rolodex of resources, if you will. Um, if these groupings have different needs than those that are not in public safety, so.
Okay, and with that being said, would the fire EMS office be the most likely space candidate for this?
I think so, given the space that is available there. Yes, sir.
Okay, because I'm not sure social services wouldn't have an aspect to that.
Is there a situation where people come in with a heartrending story and they can't do anything for it?
Oh, no, absolutely. And they're dressed in.
And it's, I mean, that's, that's why I say that. There's a, there's a variety of the same thing with law enforcement finding a, a personal situation that, uh, I mean, I, I'm just looking at, uh, at all those troops in, uh, Kebab Ball who are pushing people away. That's some tough stuff.
It is.
I just wanted to make sure facility-wise.
Okay.
We had someplace in mind for it.
To put this guy.
It does, it does no good to have.
It went all the way for it, yes.
It does.
Were you speaking about the office for the person employed by the county or the counselors themselves?
I am most concerned about during, doing counseling, where that would be done.
So it, it's my experience dealing with it from a law enforcement standpoint. I mean, we, at one time, this county was using, uh, the health insurance system to do, to do so. And the problem is, you never knew what you were getting for a counselor. You, you might not have anybody with any experience in what, what we deal with. And so, and that person was set up for the employee E, but not to assist the employer. And you were putting in a bad spot when you're trying to determine whether somebody is fit for duty. Um, in my experience with these types of things, we're sending the employee to the place to have the interview be done and complete the testing. We're getting back the information as employer, because as employer, we're hiring those people to help us assist with that. But they're trying to do it all off-ground, so it doesn't have the appearance of, you know, we're, this is a forceful, sort of Spartan way of doing it. You know, it's, so it's, they may use some space here, but I have a feeling these counselors are probably wanting to head, head their locations.
Okay, I just, for some of this, I know previous experience myself. You're going to have to have somewhere in-house that you can put a group of people. And I fully understand the individual, but that's all I wanted to make sure of, is that we had space earmarked onsite as well. Sure. Okay. All right.
I have a question about the program manager position. Organizationally, maybe this is a question to Ted, I'm not sure. How, where would that position reside organizationally? Would be, you know, embedded in the public safety group somehow? Is it a direct report to your office? Or is it part of your, your operation? What, what are we thinking, uh, organizationally?
Great question, Ms. White. We did envision this, uh, being, uh, in the HR director's, uh, supervisory chain, if you will.
Okay.
Uh, we also envision an employee advisory group from each department, uh, that, uh, would assist the departmental chain of command with input on, on how, on program design and needs and that sort of stuff. So there clearly have to be some dotted line relationships between the leaders of the, the departments back to this position. But, but for supervisory purposes, we, we envision this as a, a report to the human resources director.
And I guess I would expand the question to the, uh, do I, do I have?
Just answer your question.
I do have an interview. The groups that would be using the service, I mean, is, is this a person that they typically would go directly to for either developing programs or, or to identify a need that this person didn't kind of respond to? Is that, organizationally, does that seem to make sense to, to? I see some, some nodding going on. I'm not, I'm not trying to draw an organization charge, you believe me. I just, I'm trying to make sure that this person, this position is actually, uh, in, in the, integrated in the organization such that, that it's meeting the needs that you're, that you're envisioning.
Yes, sir. And, and I think, you know, one where we're talking about the counseling and the mental health of our providers, but we're also talking about, you know, when you talk about resiliency, you're talking about physical fitness. Physical fitness is one of the biggest things you can do to relieve stress. So the person that's, who's, who's doing this is kind of the, we're going to find the resources. We're going to get the resources in-house. We're going to get the contacts in-house, and they're going to manage those resources. Uh, but the whole resiliency program, um, if you look at Northern Virginia, they got a couple, Prince William, Fairfax. Um, their resiliency programs are kind of started in, in the fire rescue departments. But as a county, we see that there's a need for it through multiple departments. So that's kind of why it's, it's going out this way is.
That was one of the reasons I was asking about the location, and more specifically, social services. Is social services envisioning be as fully involved, including the physical fitness? Or is it a little different role?
From my perspective, I would advocate for social services to be fully involved, especially on a fit-for-duty. Um, from a perspective of fit-for-duty, I'll give you a little example, a little story, quick story. I had a level four CPS worker, one of our shining stars with a master's in social work. She, um, was in her late twenties at the time, just really working, just doing fabulous work. But with that secondary trauma that she incurred over and over, with some of the worst cases that you could possibly imagine. One day, she was driving down 20 during work to go to a family or home visit. And she started developing chest pains. And she started to have all these problems and became flooded with emotion. She was luckily very close to Chief Mort's office and pulled in, was in the parking lot trying to gather herself when Chief Mort noticed. And I think Assistant Chief Wilson, they noticed that she was having some troubles, brought her in, coached her, talked to her, called me. I came on site. So that was sort of an organic process. But if my workers had something that, or someone that they could go to before it got to that level, and so that they could be fit for duty, whereas at that point in time, she really wasn't. She had to go home for the day and actually took a few days off.
Very good. I just wanted to know where we were at in the thought process with this. So, uh, very good. Any other questions?
Yes, uh, we have a number of programs here. They'll go for three years, some for one year, and even in the, in the batch we just approved. Uh, are we looking to continue these beyond the, uh, ARC fundings? Uh, and is it going to become a part of our, regular part of our budget? Because there are some significant costs here. And I mean, if we start a resiliency program, hate to shut it off after three years.
Well, I, I think, you know, this was presented to, uh, Jim, Mike and I have some financial policies, budget direction committee. Uh, and we were basically on board with the, what we've approved. Uh, I personally, I'm not speaking for Jim, but I personally felt that, that these three that are being presented here are, they're a much larger issue, it's a much bigger step. And your question certainly is on point. Uh, you know, you can't very well, in my opinion, offer a program like that for three years and then say, you know.
Sorry, we're done.
Yeah, now we're done. So, yes, you've got to, you've got to look at what it's, what it's going to be on that.
Okay.
And one of the questions, one of the reasons I asked the organizational question is that, as you know, the, uh, at least the fire rescue portion of our tax, uh, taxing process and, and budgeting is sort of set aside as a, as a, as its own separate entity. And so it, in part, it becomes a question to, to Mark's point. Do, do we find this beneficial enough that we include it in that, uh, in that budget as well?
Well, I would say at least for the, for every part except social services, you would include that as part of your, uh, the.
It's, well, that's the point. It becomes a budget decision, uh, not only the federal fund, but, but certainly.
And especially fire rescue tied into that, and I know there's data out there. But I, I, from what I'm hearing from the rest of the board members, we would like to see what the cost savings are to the county across both healthcare, uh, which obviously we've had that discussion recently, that healthcare costs are
Yes.
way up. And I know that these do reduce healthcare costs in a lot of cases. But I know there's data out there
Yes.
that gives you a good benchmark, uh, as far as that, the actual, um, long-term employment. What, what it saves us for, I'll use hiring a new deputy. Because if a deputy leaves, there's a lot of, uh, costs that you don't think about that are included. So I think it's very important that we get these other costs so we can have a fair evaluation.
Yes.
And looking forward.
It would be interesting. I'm not sure we'd be able to get our own history, but there may be other programs that have that kind of history.
Yes, there, there is, there's plenty of, um, I, I know Major O'Callaghan's been looking at the Police Fit Program for quite some time. That at this point is probably a 30, 30 to 35-year-old program that, uh, the, the operator of that, I guarantee you, has every statistics that, from every person that's ever been involved in. So I, I, like I said, I know the information is out there. I know I would appreciate seeing that information, but so we have a little better, uh, moving forward.
Well, and that'll prove the success of the program. Yes.
Any other discussion?
Who would we approve these?
Well, we've only discussed one of them.
One of them, right.
Uh, and I, and I think they, they present three different, uh, issues.
And that's why I wanted to start with one and then move on.
So, so my problem with this is that it is limited to certain, um, departments. And I think, I think we need to be very careful about creating a two-tiered system where employees in certain departments, uh, get a benefit, get, um, resources that are out there for, for, uh, employees in other departments.
Are you talking on the resiliency side?
I'm talking about this first item here.
Okay, resiliency. So the, uh, people at the treasurer's office, they get sworn, people come in and swear at them and give them a hard time?
People of the landfill would get cussed out.
There is one other possible thought process here, where this portion could be a pilot program for one year. Then moving forward, it would incorporate the others. That's nothing more than a thought. But, um, that, you know, we, we do it as a pilot and then expand it, or provide it across the board. Mr. Warhens?
Mr. Chairman, uh, technically be responsive to Mr. Johnson's, uh, thought about the two-tiered piece. Um, just a little bit of history on where we, uh, went through some thinking around this is that the original idea, uh, almost a couple of years ago, really, or maybe more than a couple of years ago, was to create this well-being, uh, person who, who would, who would, who would provide, uh, the staff resources to develop, um, a, a set of programs around all the employees. Uh, what we, um, before we could launch it, we fell into COVID. And we, and we've come to you to talk about the, uh, the, the challenges with the health, uh, insurance fund. And, and so you're, been familiar with how we had to shift that cost out of that fund for this, this one year. And then we had this just additional kind of wave of, of, of requesting help from our public safety. And, uh, and so, uh, this was viewed as a way to add an additional layer to county-wide programs. And perhaps more industry-specific levels of service. But we do have, uh, the, the wellness or the well-being, uh, position, uh, set up. You're, uh, in fact, just approved in the last batch of money for one year until we can get back in healthcare fund for county-wide services. So, so what, I'm not going to say we won't differentiate, but there. So, so what, I'm not going to say we won't differentiate, but there, there will be a county-wide program as well.
But you're setting up two different program managers.
Agreed.
And two different, you know, everything that comes with that, you're duplicating.
No, I, I agree with you, just wanted to make sure that we were understanding, we were going to do some county-wide stuff, we do view the, the needs as higher, perhaps, for our special cohort here that we're doing this level of service for. I think we'll learn a lot while we do this, and we'll see whether we'd right-size this or whether we need to make some adjustments, or, and, and it is, in a sense, a pilot since we're really kind of pioneering this work in central Virginia, we'll be contacting our colleagues from our bigger jurisdictions, but, you know, we'll be kind of the first in this size to be, being so aggressive in this, in this space.
Why cannot the person who is going to be in the county-wide position, why, why can't he want position, why doesn't he need two positions?
Well, we just felt like there was so much work to get things started, and we, we really had so many program elements to get started on the public safety side, and we had available resources to try to jump-start it, so that's how we proposed it.
So this would be a three-year hire?
Well, initially, we, we could do it as a contract-type approach.
Well, I'm just thinking of the fact that we've got another one, do we, we have two, do we try to consolidate?
One of the concerning things that I have is this, with the current structure, we're making a three-year commitment, yeah, the funds are from something other than the general fund, I acknowledge that, but, you know, rather than having a program that we're ramping up gradually and learning and tweaking and deciding whether it's being effective and all these kind of things, this, this is an all-in approach for three years, but we will find ourselves at some point having to make the decision. Do, do we continue, and that's true not only for the resiliency, but the paramedic, as well as the EMT training, those are, you know, those are one- and three-year commitments themselves, but they very quickly, you know, have, will come into play in terms of the budget thing, and I, turning things off and on is, is a very difficult process to deal with, so I think we have to have our eyes wide open, that we're, as to how we're going about this. I would, under ordinary conditions, I would prefer that we, we build towards some capability with checks and balances along the way and tweaks and all sorts of things. This approach does not do that, it sort of says, we have this fairly sizable chunk of money, we're going to put it out there and we're going to spend it, but then the question of then what, that gives me, gives me some pause, because it, you know, just to speak pure budgetese for a moment, just the reason of the resiliency program is a couple pennies on the tax rate, for example, on manual basis. I have to say, it isn't justified, I'm not making that value judgment at this point, just that we have to think of it in terms of at some point to compound a budget, and that's why I would like the historical data, I could be wrong because I usually am, but I believe that if we extract that data, present it to us, we'll find that a difference is not very much, and we will have a happier workforce, and a workforce that is more inclined to stay here. Well, if our strategy is to say, we're going to fund this for three years because we believe at the, the end of that three years, the results will be so positive that that effect on the budget won't be significant, that it will in effect pay for itself, I mean, I suppose there's a way to get to that answer.
Be a first, I think, in the history of government programs. I don't think there is any way to, I don't think we can, we can get those numbers, I don't think those numbers exist yet. I, I think that somebody can give us, somebody can go out and find us some numbers, and people in other counties can give us some numbers, but I don't believe that you can really get numbers that really are.
We'll see it at our own, yeah.
I think we'll, we will, in time, assuming we do this, we'll, we'll sort of have our own numbers and we can try to figure it out.
I actually disagree on that one, because I was involved in very, very similar program over the years, and it was shown that between the mental health aspect and the physical fitness aspect, for the public safety particularly, there was a dramatic drop in healthcare costs as well as time off from work.
Firefighter heart attacks.
It was, so there, there wasn't, in that, what, what period of time was that?
This would have been from about, I want to say, Mike, do you remember what year he started the law fit and fire fit?
It was in the eighties, I believe.
Yeah, let, let's say eighty-five, somewhere around there, and I was involved in it through ninety-eight, and there is, they still.
Where are we talking about?
City of Fairfax.
And nothing, nothing, in that period of time, nothing else changed that could, could account for that?
Oh, I don't know, there, there may have been things that changed, I, you know, that's why we have meetings and talk about such.
That's the problem.
But overall, I do know that it reduced employee burnout, as it's called, and the medical and the mental health was much, much better among the employees. That's just, that's what I know from the past, I was involved in it, the, this law fit, fire fit, we were actually the original guinea pigs on the program, and it's been ongoing and successful since then.
Again, my, my primary problem here is that we're, we're setting up a special program for certain employees, when we, when we're already introducing a new program for all county employees, but it seems to me that this program could very easily be folded into that.
With the additional funding?
With, 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 with some additional funding, but probably not with a million dollars of additional funding, and I, I don't, I don't understand, you know, you know, I often said, when you buy, when you have one tractor, you know, you, you need three or four, you better off not buying the first one, because the board, you just need more of them, well, hey, in this, but, but most of us, you know, most we haven't demonstrated need, we just have one tractor, someone like Mr. White, you know, he has demonstrated he has four or five.
Some of those grants we used to get for EMTs, oh, and then had to, had to keep funded after the grant was over?
I think Orange County's bitten off a lot the last few years, and, yeah, we do have a lot of money that's flowing in from outside sources, but that's going to dry up at some point, and Orange County taxpayers are going to have to fund this, and I just think we need to, my, I can, I can support this if it's folded into the overall program, it can be a, it can be a special offering to, you know, to people in a specific situation, but, but it seems to me it can, it could exist under one program manager, supposed to do.
I completely agree with you, Mr. Torres.
I'm hearing these comments, just offer this thought, if we were to, instead of hiring the staff person contemplated for the resiliency piece, we know we've got the hiring of the general well-being person already, something that the board's thinking makes sense, we could, we could have some additional help available to that staff person through contracted resources, and not make them an employee, but make them a, you know, contracted person to run particular programs or program elements, then we wouldn't feel we're obligated to view them as a, an employee that's, you know, we need to continue, but rather, we can.
And we can have a track record.
Have a track record, see which programs we like, which ones we want to stand up, and then if at the end of three years, we think that we really do need a second person, well, then we'll have that debate at budget time, meantime, we'll have the, the experience of, of those contracted services and, and what employees.
The contracted services would be under the resiliency person we've already got approved.
That's not a resiliency.
Well-being.
The well-being person would contract for, for additional help with the resiliency program, but not, we wouldn't have a county, dedicated county employee.
Well, the, the person that is the program manager position here, that we're talking about for three years, that person would be a, that person would not be a counselor, that person would be a manager of the programs.
Yes, sir.
And most of the counseling, if, if not, I would think beyond just a very basic counseling, which any supervisor might get, I don't mean board supervisor, supervisor such as yourself or a department head might get, would be contracted out to professionals, is that correct?
That's how we see it, now, it might be that the person who ends up in this position happens to have some counseling credentials, and perhaps there's a piece of the program that they would want to self-perform, but we, we're not there yet, we anticipated that their responsibility would be more in the program management and bringing the contracted resources in and scheduling and, and organizing and communicating, yes, that is correct.
I would expect that the well-being person would have some experience in counseling, whether he's a, you know, in itself, just understand what he would be managing.
Right.
Yes.
Also, hopefully, as with many programs, we would be able to have peer counselors as well.
Yes.
To offset some of that. Because obviously, the people in social services have a different type set than fire and EMS as far as counseling knowledge and counseling needs, so.
Yes, it would be a degree professional with, with that type of experience.
Well, if we didn't spend that full three hundred thousand a year on that resiliency program, I'm not sure that we, one year on the paramedic, paramedicine pilot program should be two years.
Well, it's, it's not three hundred thousand, it's, it's, it's a million and fifty.
I know, three, it's three hundred.
No, program manager's three hundred, operating program budget is three hundred, and then there's four hundred and fifty in public safety and fitness as well as the sentence, so it's over a million dollars.
Well, so that's three years, I'm not sure that some of that shouldn't go into the, that paramedicine pilot program, because I'm not sure that you'll get much results over a year, I think you need at least a couple of years for that.
Well, I think the, the next two things, the chairman had divided these out, so I'm not, I'm not concentrating on the second two, I'm just looking at this, this one.
I think it was too much to.
We certainly can move on to these with the chairman's.
And I think at this time, that would be a very good thing to do, let's move on to the, the second one, being the paramedic training, which I don't think, I don't think is going to be quite as controversial.
Wait a minute, are you talking about the upgrading of EMTs, or are you talking about the paramedics?
Uh, the, okay, the paramedic pilot program, no, sorry, these screens are something to get used to.
I know. They're just, it's called paper.
Trying to save trees.
So, kind of the, the story behind paramedicine, paramedicine came out of Texas, Dr. Bledsoe years and years ago, back in the nineties, they noticed that there is a disproportionate population that is using nine-one-one in emergency rooms as their primary care physicians. So what that's doing is it's backing up your nine-one-one system for non-emergency calls, and it's also backing up your emergency room healthcare systems. So what we're envisioning is running this kind of a program with one paramedic, possibly one social worker, where we would take our frequent call list that we can pull out of our PCR database, patient care reporting database, we would schedule visits to these individuals every two weeks, by scheduling these visits, we, we can almost guarantee that we're going to reduce the amount of nine-one-one calls that come from the house. Once that program gets rolling, we can work with the health department, get lists from the health department, work with the free clinic, so the goal is to get, get people used to a primary care type relationship, other than using the emergency room and the nine-one-one center as their current primary care doc. So a lot of this is education, so going out to a diabetic's house, saying, hey, your blood sugar's low again, let's talk about it, let's talk about what you can do, what steps you can take to, to manage your blood pressure.
And with the social worker, you've got the, somebody to go and look for the resources.
Correct. You're talking a lot about repeat callers.
Yes, sir.
All of them.
Repeat callers.
So.
Repeat callers. So this would be primarily in the beginning geared towards those repeat callers, if we, if we can reduce repeat callers, we're going to reduce our nine-one-one system. The community paramedic, it is, it is an additional certification level, so they have to be a natural extra paramedic, and then they take an additional certification level on top of that, not nearly as long, that kind of talks more about primary care type work, as the pilot program goes forward, there is still, you can get up to the point where your community paramedic's actually prescribing, so if I sent Chief Wilson over there, as a community paramedic, to somebody's house and they were having, I don't know, they were having some congestion in their chest, he could write them a prescription instead of going to the hospital, getting a prescription for something that sort of could have been taken care of without tying up the restrictions.
Well, here again, this is something which would, would be used and would be a great resource for people who need it, and within ten years, it would be a budget line item at least ten times of what we're starting out with, because as word spreads, people are going to take advantage of it, and it's not going to be the repeat, it's not going to be repeat callers, it's going to be people, people, if, if, if we, if we insist that you be a repeat caller, people can certainly arrange that very easily, and so you're going to have people, hey, you know, they, they came out to, you know, to see my mama last week, so you ought to have them come out and see your daddy, and they can write you prescriptions and everything, so it's, it's, it's going to become a, we're either going to have to tell people no, which government is not particularly good at, or we're going to have to fund it at ever-increasing levels, and just, I mean, if you just look at the, the EMT, the EMS program, where it started, where it is now, and where it's likely going, and this is part of it, so, I mean, just eyes wide open, yeah, it's, it's a great thing, but it costs money, and it's, it's going to see ever higher and higher than that.
I think that, I'm sure Mark's concern is in terms of scoping this, and it, it could start out initially as almost a consultation kinds of services, but, but this is teetering right on the edge of providing medical care, you start writing subscriptions and taking blood pressures and giving counseling or advice about whatever it is, diets or exercise, or, or finding a primary care physician, you're, you're all of a sudden in the, in the medical arena, and I have some experience with that with another commission that a couple of us have served on for a very long time, and I, I don't know that, that we're prepared to be in that.
Well, just one comment regarding that, we are already in the medical profession.
Oh, absolutely.
When our people are providing their services, they are working under the license of a document, so we're already there, and I, I fully understand what you're saying, I just wanted to make sure.
The difference is the first word, emergency, as opposed to ongoing.
Is there an avenue for reimbursement for this, similar to what we have for?
Yes.
So if somebody goes out to this person's home, there's a, there's a visit, a doctor's visit or a medical professional's visit, so Medicare or Medicaid would be potentially reimbursing this.
Yes, and if the program were framed such that it ultimately could, has, has as one of his objectives, to be a, a service that's either self-supporting or supported through existing revenue sources, that's a different.
Well, I'm not sure how, you know, but I mean, we get a fraction of what it costs for, for a, an ambulance transport, and whether or not, even if we don't, it doesn't make a payment there. And whether or not, even if we don't, it doesn't make a payment there, it may it may mitigate the other if we can get the, you know. Yeah, I'm sure people will will glom onto this as a new benefit that they can they can pick up on. But if there is Medicaid or Medicare or private insurance reimbursement, probably most of these people don't have medic- private insurance or there may not be Medicare eligible yet.
And and a lot of the promotion of these these goals and community paramedic goal is not to become the primary care provider to the entire county. That's not, that's not the goal of the program. The goal of the program is kind of a stopgap. Let's identify who we have, we're going to help those people in the short term and try to get them to a primary care long term goal.
Find a free clinic or something like that, arrange social services, arrange for transportation, that kind of a thing.
Okay. Any more questions or discussions on this one before we move to section two? All right. Training to upgrade all EMTs to paramedics. Before you even start, I want to make sure that if this training is done, there is a additional contract for these employees where they have to work X number of years or they pay reimburse the county for this training.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Um so the reason we put this project forth is currently, right now in the county, we have eighteen staff members that are EMTBs or ENTIs. Um this must train to tell you that ENTI is no longer a taught certification within the state. If you have your ENTI, they're just waiting for you to trade out, but you can't ever get an ENTI again. So up until now, you could be an IRP, so intermediate or paramedic, and have the same pretty much skill set other than doing a cryo on somebody because of math. What we're finding as departments go around us, as counties go around us, it's getting harder to hire paramedics. The pool is just not there. We have eighteen great people in the county right now that have already done time in the county, they've already shown their worth to the county. This program would upgrade those eighteen within this next three years um to get us through this gap. Um in our normal budget, we do have a line item for paramedic training, but it is not anywhere near putting eight people through at a time.
So we would do this in-house?
So what we do is we would contract with a, there's only two companies that I know of right now that are doing this that aren't within the um community college setting. We would contract with that company to do it in Orange at Berryhill. We have found that when we send people outside of the county, we don't have control over the instructors, we don't have control over, I guess, the QA QI of how the class is going. And we feel if we can do this in-house, that we will have a much better pass rate because we're going to keep our employees here. And we're going to put some programs even behind this to make sure that they're getting study time, they're getting programs.
One one thought process with that is there's a very good possibility of partnering partnering with a section, Germana Community College, and that's a section that Ben Sherman takes care of. Because that is what he does, he sets up specific classes for businesses that will train those people, those people only, under the program. So that's another avenue that you can go.
Yes, sir.
To assist with.
And I am on the Germana EMS board. Um the the problem we're having right now is with COVID and we're seeing attrition, we're seeing burnout. We're losing medics and we cannot replace those medics. There's just no medics out there to replace them.
How long, uh Mr. Fisher asked about the uh the contract, how how long these contracts typically could be for or something like that?
Um so I know the sheriff's department has a contract, um they call them contracts, but it depends on the amount of money they're spending. So these classes are generally eight thousand dollars. So I believe there is a county policy that talks about numbers. How much we spend as to how much time you got put into county before you have to pay that money back. So that would be a, we gotta work with HR and figure out that that magic number.
I know a lot of jurisdictions, you're required three years at completion of the program.
And our our new EMTs that we're hiring as of two years ago are all on a four year contract.
So uh as opposed to paying their tuition to go to Germana or something else or to a private employer, we would be doing it in-house with a little more control.
Yes, sir. And with bringing it in-house and hiring a accredited company, the time span, we're going from a two year Germana program. So it's a two year, if you're going IP, it's about a, what, three year? If you're going B to P. We're reducing that down to about an eight month timeframe to get us kind of through this.
You mentioned, you mentioned the uh, do we, when we hire new people out, do we require they be in uh paramedics?
Uh we will hire an EMT currently, but on contract to become a paramedic within four years.
Okay.
Paramedics right there.
That's right.
One one just. Particular item has that the others do not, is this is something that that we can not only get result measurements from, that we can throttle it up and down as we as we need to. This is, this is, this is different than than the the ones above it on the list in that respect. And I'm I'm more inclined to say this is a good candidate for the types of money that we're talking about here because it's it's something that we can do that's really special, it it addressing a specific need that we have and we'll we'll know. And it's a more front loaded program. It is absolutely front loaded, right.
Are we talking about having our own instructor?
Yes, sir. So we would still have to contract with an accredited agency.
Okay, but they would come to Orange to do that.
They would come to Orange and the way that we would write that contract is that we would have a say in who the instructors are. Pennsylvania has a similar um contract right now because they have an EMT contract that they sign. There's about five different counties around us that they're all going through this, and they're all bringing the contractor into the county because you tend to get better results. It is, it is not an easy class.
And from what you're saying, it sounds like the majority of this this budget item would go toward the training itself.
Yes, sir.
And materials, I think, but primarily the training.
Absolutely.
All right, uh would you, Ben, here, are you going to pull these?
Well, part of three.
That's what I was going to say. Uh let's let's go to the easiest one first. We we will pull the training to upgrade all EMTs to paramedics as a separate item. And I would like to maintain motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
House is unanimous. Let's go back to the paramedicine pilot program. Do we have uh some further discussion on that? I'd like to ask, uh Martin, think, can we get a a good feel for this in a year or should we push this for longer?
I I think we can get a feel for it in a year, um but any good data, two years to three years is kind of your set point. I have no doubt if we rolled it out tomorrow, we would have customers.
I and I'm having a bit of trouble with this on this side. Is it really, is it a real, a social worker driven program? Maybe the the counseling and and those kinds of things. Or is it headed in the direction of medical care? Those are, those are very different.
Well, I love.
In terms of of the role the county will be playing. I'm saying they both aren't needed, but.
And a lot of the cases that MORT is referring to, often my social workers have to be involved from an adult protective services standpoint. So we are, we are doing a lot of extra footwork that he does doesn't even really delve into. In his presentation, I was just thinking, you know, how much it would even help my staff because we're going out trying to convince folks to, you know, get the care they need. Evaluate for self neglect, potentially even start seeking some sort of action. In the most extreme cases, some sort of action to um bring them into care. So there is very much a social worker aspect to to that scenario.
It definitely starts off as a medical aspect, so we're we're getting called for a medical reason. We're just not getting called for what a nine one one ambulance should be called for, if that makes sense.
Well, but right there you have sort of the, you catch twenty two, we start talking about, uh you know, self neglect, that person's probably not calling repeatedly. So you've already got a a new group of of.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
Well, I don't know, if then self neglect is not the right term for it.
It may not be.
If they're calling for help, they're not, if they're calling for help, they're not neglecting themselves.
They're neglecting to take their medicine or they, uh, you know.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, there's a part of this group that that definitely are, you're are going out to and just talking to because they're calling because nobody else is.
And you've got people that just call just because they like the attention. And you've got people who call because they think they're going to get a picture kind of medication. You know, there's all kinds of reasons why people call. But there's, then there's a lot of people out there who aren't taking care of themselves. And 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 they could benefit from this program, but they probably don't. I mean, there there is a subset of people.
You're correct.
That would not, that would not call nine one one.
The self neglect subset that you're referring to, absolutely, they still exist. And we still depend on various entities to report them because they won't report themselves.
Further discussion? I think this is one that I I I think we need a little more definition of what it is and what to do. I could see a program, for example, that that referrals coming from social services uh could go to or, for example, that says, here's, here's a case that has these characteristics, and we think that that a little involvement occasionally of a paramedic could help this person, help us as we try to help this person. That kind of a program is one that I think could be targeted in a in a way that it could could help that cohort of people. I'm really concerned about opening this up and and, you know, taking the frequent flyer list and and all of a sudden offering them new opportunities. That seems to be a little bit, not not quite as as thought through as much as we need to set that in. I would hate to get to the point where this has gotten out of control and we have to either stop it or expand it by an order of magnitude or whatever, none of which is a good answer. I would rather have it have this evolve a few steps at a time and see what, where can we be of the most help to the people that really do need it. And I think you're uniquely positioned, your organization's uniquely positioned to be able to identify those opportunities.
I think the, I think that MORT's organization is probably more likely to to be alerted on it. I mean, the literature I've read on the paramedicine program has all been very positive. And uh and even, oh, I like to see it for two years, I'd certainly want to see it at least for one year so that we can begin to understand what it is locally we're seeing.
One one thing that we would need to make sure of is that we have those safety valves in place where we don't take a frequent flyer, create another frequent flyer because they understand, oh, I can get this community in paramedicine out here. It is, I I know it's being used in a lot of places. Uh I I know I had a neighbor for many years that because of the disconnect at the time between social services and EMS, uh that's what they did. They called every time that they had a mental issue, and instead of sending it to social services and them being able to take care of it. And I I I will tell you, I'd like to have a dollar for every frequent flyer called that I ever ran. And I I just want to say the.
I referred a lot of frequent flyers to uh social services in my time, and I know that the the career people have done likewise. But I think the first indicator is when they get the nine one one call, and that's what, that's what's what's what drives it as opposed to social services. And they do see some people with with the uh, you know, coming in from neighbors that have reported them or family members that have reported them. But I think the ones that are end up at the emergency room, they're they're finding out from the uh EMTs.
Once again, this could be done as the pilot program that for, that I agree with you, at at least two years, if not three. And and keep very close to statistics and costs during the time of it so that if it is not beneficial, it's something we can stop.
Well, I would move that we would approve the paramedicine pilot program for what year?
Well, is is this limited just to homebound citizens or is it going to morph into something bigger?
No, sir, it's mainly going to to the the homebound.
The homebound. So the ones that most need it, the most discussed. But it will be used by others given the opportunity. Yes?
Mr. Frank, I'd like to go back to your motion. You want one year?
I'll do it for one year. So we we look at it really as a pilot.
Okay.
I'm going to add to it, I see.
Second it. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Order one. All right. Now back to number one. Rather than discussion, I would like some thoughts as to if this is a direction that we can go with it.
I think we should take lightly confused. You don't like discussion, you just want some thought.
We had a discussion earlier. I I think everybody knows where we're standing.
That would do the point.
That's right. We're we're thinking about.
What would you support?
Exactly, or not.
I would support taking the the general program that we talked about and growing it over time as we see results.
I like it.
That's how I would address this. It could be grown fairly quickly if we, you know, have a specific plan.
Are you talking about the, under under the wellness manager?
Yes, you know, take, start with the wellness manager, sort of, you know, e- e- employee wide availability. And 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 build from that.
Why don't we ask Ted, based on that, to come back with a proposal working off of the wellness manager?
I'm talking about.
Okay.
And if it's a good approach. Is there any thought process to taking a portion of these monies so that that program can be accelerated from the original plan? Not, I'm not saying spend a million dollars.
Well, don't we need to see what Ted comes back with?
Well, that's, but that's what I'm saying here.
Well, we can agree not to spend this money on anything else in the meantime.
Just to facilitate maybe getting on with it, I might propose that we reduce these three year line items on fitness and wellness incentives. And operating program budgets, reduce them to one year and eliminate the program manager position as a county employee, but leave it at the one year level of contracted services. And then approve it at that level. I'll use the county staff person in the well being program to ramp it up, accessing these funds to operate. We'll come back and give you updates over the course of the year, where we are, what we're doing. And then you'll you'll have the remaining funds to look at in year two, year three to decide whether you think we should, you know, continue or expand or leave it the way it is.
Is there a motion to that similar effect? I I'm not sure I kept everything he said. I think, I don't think I could form a motion yet.
Would you like to recap or something? Certainly. All these funds are already appropriated, uh but uh they aren't earmarked for a particular use. So I, my suggestion would be that we identify u- under the three categories here, program manager position, operating program budget, and public safety, fitness and wellness incentives. That we um cut those amounts in into one third and approve it as is with the understanding that the uh program manager position will not be a a county hire but will be available funds for contracting for program support.
So that that'll take this down to uh uh three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred.
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, sir.
As opposed to a million.
Is there anyone that would like to adopt that as a motion? I I think I would be okay with a motion that that prov- I, I think I would be okay with a motion that, that provided a pool of funds, three hundred and fifty, to develop this program. I don't think I would put it in any of those categories, however. Because I'm not sure, for example, the fifteen hundred dollar a year financial incentives. I've seen situations where that's been tried and it, it, it works for a handful of people for a while. The one that does work is you, you give them what amounts to work time, either before duty, in the middle of duty, or after duty to do some activity to, to, to help their fitness or whatever. Not, not just, you know, giving them money. So I, I think we, we need time to get better examples of how that could work. You need some money to, to do some, some work and get started and hire some experts to.
But your motion is three hundred and fifty thousand to start this.
But non-categorized, it's just.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Well, I, I, again, I question, you know, if a full-time program manager costs a hundred, I don't think a contract is gonna cost a hundred. If it does, we probably are compensated. The operating program budget, software training on the program expenses, you know, I don't know. Is that? Is that, is that really?
Well, the three fifty might be too much. I, I mean, I, I was, I did pause a little bit with that number, but.
And then the, and then the, and then the fifteen hundred a year, again, I, I, I don't know if you were envisioning that. And I, I understand that you're not real fond of that particular way, but this specifically says for certain employees. And I would, I would want it available to employees across the board.
How about we make the number two fifty, a pool of two fifty.
And also something to keep in mind, even though the operating program budget is spread over three years, theoretically a hundred thousand a year, software, training are going to be front-loaded expenses, not really going to be over a three-year period. So I.
All I'm gonna do is create a.
A pool of money.
Sufficient to get him so he can get started, test a few things, see what's working, get some expertise in.
And then come back to us in a, in a.
And we do.
Meeting or two and say, this is how I'm gonna employ this, and this is how I'm gonna use the wellness manager. And, and he's not constrained to these three categories or these proportions.
Okay, are we, we have a motion?
Motion and a second.
And a second. Is that motion and the second, is there amendment to that? As far as a dollar amount, how are we, where we were at?
I would, I would like to amend the motion, my motion to be a pool of two hundred and fifty thousand, recognizing that, that every meeting we do amendments to our budget, so the time is right.
I'll, I'll go with that to get something started.
Okay, you're willing to amend your motion.
At the second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Well, the, again, I think the question comes down to two hundred and fifty thousand for what? Is it, is it going to be a, a special carve-out for just certain employees? Or is it, is it going to be additional services for all employees?
My guess is it will be additional services for all employees, but, but probably an increment on top of that for this group. That's what it's like to manage. That's what you typically see. There's, there's, there's extra incentive and extra opportunity, really. We, for example, to use the example, maybe we don't say to every employee, you know, take twenty minutes out of your day, out of your paid day to have a program like this. We, we may offer other kinds of incentives, but it could be for the public safety group that we do say your extra incentive is that you can do this largely or partially.
That you do, do participate, do not give the option to not participate.
That's really the effect.
Right.
That's. But we don't know yet. I mean, that's the challenge to Ted and, and everyone else is.
All right. If we are going with the special, we have the first and the second. And at this time, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Thank you very much, board members.
Jim.
Did our best shot.
Thank you.
I would, I would say that my expectation would be that the county district will come back in sixty days and somehow why we have these divisions, this quarter, maybe dollars.
All right, we are now on item C, adjustments to childcare fee schedule. Alicia.
I bet this won't take long.
Hope none of that girl scouts wait no longer. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For you is a memo from our office requesting that we update our childcare fees. With the change in the school schedule this year, we are having to staff more staff in the morning because we have longer hours. Afternoon hours, the two of our sites have generally stayed the same because we have middle schoolers who get out an hour and a half earlier. So again, we're just trying to make adjustments so that we can make our ends meet. We did make adjustments last year for numerous reasons. But, and we waited to the last minute to do this this year, to see what the schools would be doing with their, with their hours. So attached is a draft fee, or excuse me, a draft fee schedule along with the previous one, so you can see a comparison. The major things, again, we're adjusting some of the regular fees, but we've also changed our registration fee to make it easier on us for accounting purposes, for prorating and such. And parents will only get charged that when they attend now, which is really big for some of our teachers and our summer kids. And then we also did away with the out-of-county rate. We did not have a lot of kids, so it's not gonna have a major fiscal impact on us. And hopefully we'll be able to pull some kids in, knowing that they don't have to pay that extra, extra fee, so. One thing I would like to ask if you guys do approve this with our registration fee. I know the memo says we'd like for the regular fees to take effect October fourth, so we can let the parents know. We would like to make the registration fee policy retroactive back to the beginning of school year, so that it's just easier for us to calculate moving forward. If you have any questions.
The page eighty-five is, is currently and page eighty-four is which you're proposing to go to.
The one we're proposing here, who has draft at the top.
Right.
Yes, sir. I don't have page numbers online, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, there's two different fee schedules, one of them says.
One is higher than the other.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Any questions for Alicia?
Moving approved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass as you have.
Thank you, Gary.
Next is abandonment of a portion of Route seven thirty, Ms. Lou, Allison.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you this evening is a request that staff receives from the Virginia Department of Transportation to consider the abandonment of a portion of Route seven thirty, Madison Run Drive. We were contacted by VDOT a couple of weeks back, and this was part of their attempt to clean up what they call missing inventory list items. So in short, the subject portion of Route seven thirty was already previously abandoned by the Virginia Department of Transportation at least two decades ago from what I can gather.
Somebody stole it.
Meaning that that portion of road does not physically exist and it is not currently being maintained by VDOT. The missing inventory component is that VDOT does not have a record of where the local governing body adopted a resolution formalizing the abandonment. So VDOT staff has conducted a windshield inspection. The road is definitely not there. It is forested land. What VDOT has on record is what matches our record on GIS. And I also talked to Ms. Crozier, who does our nine-one-one addressing, and we looked at it on GIS and didn't have any concerns regarding addressing any future developments. The email that I provided you from VDOT also mentions alternate direct access. So VDOT has also determined that any of the land around there has other existing state-maintained roads that they can use to access their property. So what I'm asking for this evening is, should you be okay with moving forward to consider the abandonment? You could need to do a public hearing, and your action this evening would just be a motion to authorize me to schedule and advertise. The public hearing does have a thirty-day, a thirty-day publication window, so we wouldn't be able to actually hold the public hearing until your first meeting in October.
Mr. Allison?
It is in District One, yes.
I think Allison has aptly summed up the situation. I can't get any into it.
I just see my, I, GPS A turned left here.
I actually do have a question then.
Okay.
Is there a right-of-way or some easement that exists that would revert to the various property owners or? We have a number of roads in the county that used to be quote county roads that are not owned by anybody. They're still planted, they show up. In some cases, you can even tell where they were because they're, they were just wagon roads, literally, and so they're.
So what does the, what does the plant say? Is it saying property documents say there's a right-of-way there?
Well, that's the thing, is do, do we know if there's an ownership involved or if there's a right-of-way involved? Or, or do we, are we going to assume and/or notify the property owners that they actually now have control over something they might not have had control over? That I, I'm, I'm being, I have a smile on my face only because I know there's so many of these. My question is, should we prepare ourselves to deal with?
If, if we do this, if we eliminate the road, does that automatically take away the right-of-way or does that right-of-way still exist?
That's what this is doing, is abandoning the right-of-way.
Is it a right-of-way though? That's the question. If it's a right-of-way, then VDOT has title to the property. If it's an easement or a prescriptive easement, you never had title to the property until the end.
To do an abandonment.
So there's no abandonment. You just, you just let it grow up in trees like you did. I, I, I mean, maybe it's a question that can be turned.
Yeah, there are a lot of VDOT roads, something like, I don't know, a lot, correctly VDOT roads, we own. We own them. Right, I assume because they're asking us for the resolution that the dedication might have been made to the county originally. And unstable, what happens if it is, fifty percent goes to each property owner on each side, if that's the case. We have the research data.
Yes, I had a look through the plots. I, I could see, I think the initial email that I received from Mr. Wilson that, and yes, it's mentioned in his email that Route seven thirty was initially added to the secondary system back in nineteen sixty-four. So I could, you know, do some research to see what was.
So, so it might have been right-of-way dedicated to the county before that.
In a secondary road, it, it typically is prescriptive easement, and the abandonment is simply the first step and it reverts back to the property. We didn't have the property to begin with. We had an easement and had permission to maintain the roadway fifteen foot either side of center line. And all this does is really, there's two steps. Whether there's an abandonment of our easement, which is really the county's easement since it's a secondary route. Or if we did, we could simply discontinue maintenance and retain the easement if it proved beneficial for public use for some reason. This is the first step in the process, and it, it's just relieving our responsibility of maintenance of, of section of trees that we're not maintaining anyway. There's a backlog of them across the state that we're reconciling, and this is one in orange.
And looking at it on GIS, it does not show as dedicated right-of-way. It, it looks like easement on GIS.
Yeah, I would guess it's, it's, as you say, it's prescriptive easement. At best, at best.
If easement lifted and, and Mr. Saunders said it just, the owner has unbridled ownership to that, maybe some of this.
But is there anything that is recorded in the circuit court as to that easement being made? Or does it just stay silent?
Doesn't sound like anything is recorded now to show the easement, so.
Not that I'm worried.
Yeah.
It's a clerical correction.
Correct.
So we don't even need to file this with the court till let them know.
Or the property owner, apparently.
All we need is a resolution to initiate the workflow with our central office who will then reconcile the books. It's a step that my.
I, I don't have any better understanding of it.
Typically, in Somerset in your district is a good example, where we've just built a new roundabout, where we used to have a four-way intersection. And we've changed the amount of roadway that's in the network system, and how be it not very much, but we have to correct that. And at one point, the residencies were responsible for that. You know, they closed Louisa Residency in two thousand and eight. Any projects that were built since then until two thousand and sixteen were reopened. That didn't get done at all. And there's timelines as the residency resources were reduced, that step in the workflow at the end of the construction project went away. It just simply fell off, people stopped doing it. And now we've realized that statewide, we have a lot of network corrections, and our funding is based on that. So every, every inch, so we have to reconcile that. So in addition to this backlog process for Somerset and future construction projects that we're finishing, we'll also need to, in, in some circumstances, if we have a realignment or we're adding or subtracting roadway, we'll need to do this routinely, routinely every other year when a project's finished.
I can provide some additional easements if you'd like some.
The Streeting State Code section says the governing body should have noticed that its intention abandoned such highway landing, railroad crossing, which is the section, by posting its intention to do so these three days before the regular term of the circuit court at the front door of courthouse. And place at least three signs along the road that's gonna be abandoned, stating our intention to abandon.
So the deer could see the signs and the way it's.
Well, now, now you can see why it didn't get done. Yeah.
So is there, is there a motion to the brought forward?
His route. What do you want to have like? Word is.
And you said it was always District Four. Okay. Sorry.
Are you, are you actually asking us for a, are you asking us to ask you to abandon the road? Is that really what you're asking us?
Yes, sir. Only the local governing body can initiate the process.
So, so you all didn't have the right to abandon the road without the board's supervision request? So that's really the, the.
That's what the Streeting State Section.
We need to ask them to abandon a road that they abandoned twenty years.
Fifty years, you know, it sounds like.
It's us abandoning a road that VDOT abandoned. Official abandoning isn't completed until we do it. Gentlemen, till we do the thorough visit, then we're.
I, I guess, I mean, we need to go, I don't think we need a, we haven't, need a motion to hold a public hearing or just get the public hearing scheduled?
Um, you can do it either way, by motion or by consensus.
I'd like to see, see a motion.
Yeah, I like consensus.
In that case.
In all my years of public service, I've worked for consensus.
Is there consensus among the board to do this?
Yeah.
They have a public hearing.
Okay.
All right, I see no poll business. I see no department director constitutional officer reports. Mr. Lunt, you have a report, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Orhais.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll see my update in, in your packet to the two-year schedule. It's the latest quarter. It's in blue. I'm here to answer any questions. I would also note that we did not touch on the SMART scale matter when we had the opportunity with Mr. Saunders here. He is still here, so if you would indulge us for just a few minutes to kind of touch on the SMART scale process, make sure we're on track for that, I appreciate it. And if you have questions on the strategic update.
Administrative.
I, I can sum it up to business owners very quick. No money, no money, no money. You're pushed off a few more years.
We hold the format, we can't split the way.
That's right.
Every, every two years, and I think supervising marshals would be a benefit for your first cycle going through this, even though we're about to go into round five. SMART scale is a framework that was established for allocating funds to projects and prioritizing funds based on House Bill eighteen eighty-seven. That number is correct. That number is correct. But I'll give you a quick overview of this. And then if you have any questions of, we're getting into the step. At every round, round three, round four, we have begun planning sooner and sooner because we realize that we're competing for funds across the entire state. So we're trying to do a better job identifying the projects that we feel have the highest probability of getting funded so that we can focus on those. So I'll flip real quick to sheet two, SMART scale. Figure the right projects for funding and ensuring the best use of Vtrans funds according to House Bill eighteen eighty-seven. I do have a link down at the bottom that's the technical guide. If you want more information about that or you want to schedule a follow-up meeting with me to walk through that, I'd be glad to do that. So I'll jump to the, let me scroll through this real quick. Just a map, identify within the four categories within SMART scale. Orange County is in category D. And that's a factor of the elements of the scoring. As you see for categories A, B, C, and D, the factors for each of the five elements that we're measuring against congestion, economic development, accessibility, safety, and environmental quality vary. The primary weighted elements for category D, of which Orange County is in, are economic development and safety. Congestion mitigation, even though we may have some at twenty-five, twenty-two, is not necessarily a factor compared to some of the metropolitan areas. So our factors, our primary factors are economic development and safety. So when we're supporting the county's efforts to prepare for applications for SMART scale, our two focuses are predominantly on economic development and safety. I'll jump real quick to the next slide. In round four, for the four hundred applicants statewide, funding request totaled six point three billion dollars. The funding that was available for round four was one point four billion. So there's quite a gap between what was requested, what's needed across the state and what's available. Within the Culpeper district, there were thirty-six applications. Thankfully, nineteen projects received funding. And that's a, there's many factors involved in that. That wasn't the case in rounds one through three. But for round four, there were some reasons why we had some additional funding. Compared to the year, the round before, we received twenty million. In round four, we received one hundred and fifty million dollars in funds. So those funds were spread across nineteen projects. The fund request totaled three hundred and forty million. We got a hundred and fifty, so it's less than half.
It looks like you got a higher ratio than what's available throughout the state.
We did, thankfully, we sure did. And it compared to in, in round three, where we had forty-four applications for twenty million dollars. It didn't go very far. This year, we've got nineteen projects across our nine counties. And that's, that's really, it's, it's exciting. I apologize for the small print. This information is available on the SMART scale website, same link. And I'm not going to go through all of the details for each, but you can see between the three count, the three projects that we applied for, the two thirty-one High Street, the twenty-five, twenty-two intersection, and the oh-three, or the Route three, Route twenty intersection, the ranks within the district. Two thirty-one High Street was the sixteenth project. Twenty-five, twenty-two was twenty-second. It was close. We had nineteen projects funded and it was twenty-second. So it was close. The Route three and twenty was rank thirty-four. So that, that was really a factor. Two things, thankfully, we don't have a lot of injury crashes at that intersection. And the one solution that we were proposing, the green tea, didn't eliminate the safety concern, which are post-train left in front of oncoming traffic coming down the hill. And that's combined with the high cost of the project was the reason it just simply didn't score well. And as we begin talking about round five, that is one that we're not going to recommend. The county has four applications and that one didn't score well enough and we don't know what else to do right there this time. So we're not going to propose any improvements at three or four. In round five, planning, I will jump real quick and go over the schedule, a couple of acronyms, PSI and TSN, and then recommendations moving forward. The schedule, we're well ahead of March twenty twenty-two. Our goal is to begin over the fall, planning and coordinating with the counties to begin identifying the four projects that you're going to focus on and then begin allocating our design resources, track engineers, and preparing before March, which is the pre-submission deadline for selecting four projects. The, the Vtrans midterm needs that were adopted this past March are updated on the website. And I think that there are going to be some changes. There may be some changes. And including when we get back up into the table, land use was one consideration that might be a factor in category D as an example. So some of those changes we have seen in the earmarks and transportation, but we don't know anything about yet. We haven't received any additional information for it. So I'm going to go pretty quickly through the current safety needs that have been identified by the traffic engineers. PSI, that's an acronym that we use a lot. That's potential for a, a safety improvement. So you may have an intersection like five twenty-two and six fifty, where we see a lot of crashes. The potential for a safety improvement there is moving the top of the hill. And it, it might not necessarily have good PSI, even though the crashes are high and we unfortunately have fatalities there this year. So when we start talking about projects and the traffic safety needs, that's a combination of the PSI data relative to injuries and fatalities. So when you look at what is the opportunity for improvement versus the injuries and fatalities, that's how we begin to identify a traffic safety need in TSN. The, the, our traffic data is currently based on twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen data. And as that data is updated, which it should be, or we can do a site-specific traffic study, when we're considering over the next six weeks or six months preparing for March, we should get some updated traffic data for a specific site, including the traffic information on Route three. This slide shows you the top PSI locations across Orange. And the good thing is two of these projects are funded. The item number twenty-two, that's the roundabout out in Barbersville. Item number ninety-one, that's the two thirty-one High Street roundabout. So two of the projects that are identified as PSI needs in this map that the traffic engineers have identified, thankfully, are already funded moving forward. The other four, number eight, twenty-five, twenty-two intersection. One oh-four, that is the twenty-six, twenty-one intersection. Seventy-four is the twenty-six, eleven intersection. One oh-nine is at the Lakewood Woods Route three intersection. So, yes, sir.
I'm a little confused. You said twenty-two was Barbersville, but it's.
Somerset.
Sorry, Somerset. Already, already finished, right?
Okay.
The Somerset, the twenty thirty-three roundabout is already funded and it advanced. It did not show up as a PSI location and the traffic engineers have identified it as not incorrect. It's the Somerset that we just mentioned.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
And that's, when I pulled up this slide, I would have figured that out. That in this slide, again, I apologize for the small print, but identifies over in the right, the comments, the five twenty-two, twenty, we've submitted that in rounds two, three, and four. It scored very well in round four and we're going to recommend that again. The two thirty-one twenty project, the intersection, let's see, this twenty-six, eleven, that's one that we already submitted in round three. We have an application ready to go. We would need to update the cost estimate for that intersection. And that's why we think it would be a good alternate for the four projects. The six twenty-one twenty, its priority was ninety-six and it didn't score well simply based on its rank within the PSI intersections. And that's one that we're not going to recommend out of here for moving forward. And then the, the third one was that the entrance to Lakewood Woods on Route three, Goodwood Drive, the, the last one. So that intersections, there were also some route segments that were identified on Route three. In addition to the PSI, the intersections, there were some route segments that were identified on Route three for improvement. This slide has all of the applications that the county has applied for in the past and previous rounds. And it is, again, it's important, several of them funded. So that's good news. And then one of those is, is finished. As far as recommendations, right now, we have four. The, the four that we're recommending, the twenty and five twenty-two. That one scored well enough. It's just only because we'll need to update the estimate and resubmit it, including the economic development factors that we can weigh in and anything that's been increased since round four. And that one will be a light lift. Route three, Lakewood Woods, that not only is one of the PSI locations as part of the German Ward Rosaria Plan and wilderness crossings development may have, that's a priority. And that's one of the things that we're going to go back and look at with the county is try to pair up the wilderness crossing developments along with these PSI locations and see if there are any priorities that we could align together. But the Route three Lakewood Woods entrance is, is another one that we would recommend. Our code restricted crossing U-turn at another location east, whether it's Taco Bell or further east on Route three. We've got enough median there and that too would probably be a really good location to begin to get people used to turning right so that they can come back to the left and provide a relief valve for the Goodwood Drive, Lakewood Woods Route three intersection. One thing that we are going to go back and, and follow up with the county is to look at those GWAP and wilderness crossings priorities to determine if we can align a project. If we find one based on wilderness crossings development schedule and the TSN need, it has to be a Vtrans need in order to apply for it. But if those two things we can align, there may be another candidate on the Route three quarter that would be a better solution than providing a roundabout in twenty and six eleven. If we don't identify something within the next four months, we can always revert back to the twenty-six, eleven intersection because we've already got an application together that the county submitted for that. We just need to update the estimate. So currently, that is our plan. And we had a really good meeting last week walking through that. And we really appreciate the county's support. It's all this framework for SMART scale is under the presumption that the counties have this immense traffic engineering staff to prepare these applications and studies and cost estimates. But you do not. And I'm glad that we're planning even earlier this year because we need to do everything that we can to try to.
Apparently, I guess being category D, is, is there something that we could do to say for certain roads at least, that needs to be looked at again? We were talking earlier about five twenty-two and twenty, that intersection there. Traffic especially involving, you know. It, it doesn't show over the last, they are going back to twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen. You know, in the last several years, there's been a lot of activity and development that has increased that traffic. And it seems to me that measures of congestion and time delays and those kind of things that are not category D items do come into play at that intersection.
As do the, at the three and twenty intersection.
Right. So I'm, I'm not sure that we aren't, you know, fighting our categorization as much as we are trying to play to the, the ranking game.
Regional categorization.
It, it is, and it, it is something that certainly people much smarter than I have been evaluating. And even within the Culpeper district, our client, Chuck Proctor and Covina from SWAT, they reviewed and looked at, let's take our project, take the scores and apply it to the different categories to see if it would have been a category A or in this instance, category C. How well will it have scored relative to D? And in the instances we had for our applications, there was very few instances where another category would have provided a higher score.
And it's, as I know, this was actually done through the regional commission to get which categories we ended up in. And in order to be competitive for funding, that's how we ended up in D. We were much more competitive in D for funding. And it is, it is done as a region rather than the individual jurisdictions. And we, I believe we were originally in C and, and got changed. I believe that was the discussion or it moved us.
And they changed the weighting of each of the categories.
Right, which gave us better odds of getting some funding, which obviously it made a difference. We've got more funding than we definitely would have in different categories.
Having said all that, um, am I correct in, uh, uh, understanding what you were saying now that the, that that project, the five twenty-two, twenty scored so close in a previous round that it's likely to get funded this next round? And so even though it may, may get funded with category D, meaning congestion's not the primary issue, it'll still get funded, which means we could address congestion in the design of the project. So it'll be built for primarily safety reasons, but it can be designed to take care of the traffic.
That is correct.
So as long as it gets funded.
Yeah.
Worrying about the category isn't necessarily critical, but I, I certainly get your point. We want to have the right category to maximize benefits.
And it would be interesting to see over the four categories, maybe C and D, where'd all the money go statewide?
Yeah.
How many, how, what percentage of the money went to D? Let me guess.
Hey, hey, it goes to A.
Our, our current, our district engineer, acting district engineer, Michelle Schropzschauer, she is the preliminary engineering manager for the Fredericksburg district. And she always tries to remind me when I complain about congestion that you've been on ninety-five.
That's her fault.
Yeah. She can fix that. She can, she can fix that. So the congestion portion of it is relative, but we can apply that in the design. And I am optimistic that at least if we consider that as one of the solutions that the county applies for, because it has nineteen predecessors now that are funded and out of the way, that it has a higher probability of getting funded. We don't know what the other localities are going to do, but it will certainly. Jump that up. So that is. And the roundabout, how large roundabout there, we've, again, fifteen fifty-three is an easy one to point to because the traffic, the large trucks, the school buses, and which ones are very well down in Palmaro.
Palmaro.
Fifteen and fifty-three. And the traffic around Lake Monticello is just, it's not Lakewood Woods, but it's another one of our larger populous centers. And it's, it's working very well. We've got three roundabouts on the fifty-three quarter around Lake Monticello. And all of them are functioning really well.
For people that used to up there, they really work well.
Twice as fast as the whiteboards. So that is one of the recommends. So really, we don't need any actions tonight. I wanted to share this, see if you have any questions. And just to let you know that these are the things that we're considering. The action items for VDOT are really to follow back up with the county to review wilderness crossing, any proposed proppers that may be used to offset. The top five projects of the nineteen, the localities offset their SMART scale cost by using local funds. And that's something that we've seen trends across the state for projects that were awarded. So there's an opportunity there. The thing that we do have to consider that's not highlighted here, we're talking about twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty when these are being built. So in wilderness crossings, the developer's schedule may be much. And then it wouldn't be a good candidate, but we've always got twenty-six, eleven.
Very good. Thank you, Alan.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks for staying around.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
And thank your team again for helping us in, in the broadband arena.
I, I will.
We, we are about to embark on working with another district, another residency.
Your favorite one.
My favorite one.
I am.
Miss Simpson too. Good evening.
Thank you, Alan.
All right, more comment. We'll start with Mr. Curn. Mr. Johnson.
I echo that.
Do you want to speak, buddy?
Oh, well, in the good news department, we did receive so much needed rain this week. In the bad news department, I think we all need to pray for our American citizens and Afghan friends and allies that are in Afghanistan. I might get political, but this is a real, real tragedy that we're going through of the normal citizens. And just to bring light on some of that.
Thank you very much, sir. I have no comment. Next is informational items. After that, there's appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have any? One, two, twice, gone. Uh, calendar, um, the only change I've seen in the September calendar is that the planning commission are not meeting on September seventh.
And I did send an email just shortly before the board meeting for a board supervisor's work session, three thirty P M on September fourteenth at the end of your Robichok meeting. That was also not on the calendar, but it, it will be.
Oh, relative to that, do we, do we feel we're going to have the state adjusted numbers by then?
No way to really know. We, we haven't gotten any word one way.
So is there any, if we don't get, if we don't have them, is there any reason to have the work session?
Well, our intent was to present what we did know, talk about the schedule, which is very short. Uh, there are a couple of options in how you proceed with respect to that schedule. Uh, and then, uh, show the, the tools that we have to make proposals and, and hope that if you kind of head down a conceptual path that the. that the state adjustments won't be so dramatic that they won't approach completely without.
And can you speak at all of what those state adjustments are?
Yes, sir. The, the, well, one of the, one of the two that I'm aware of is to locate incarcerated persons back to their home address. I also believe there's a military relocation back to home address question out there as to whether they get assigned to their base or to their home address. I'm not quite sure. But the incarcerated persons is definitely.
Do we have any idea when the redistricting for feds and state are going to be finished?
The Virginia Commission is just started and they're hammering out how they're going to proceed, but they, they just started, I think, I'm sure.
And they, they went through a round of stuff and then I think it was just yesterday, voted to clean slate, start again.
Yeah, they're scrapping all existing districts and starting from scratch on the congressional and state side here.
Just because we want to avoid split precincts or split districts.
Well, because they want to show how bipartisan they are. I think at the end of the day, the general sense they have to extend us past December 31th because I have a feeling they're going to take longer than anyone's anticipating, but we'll see.
Very good. Do we have anyone who signed up for public comment?
No, sir. Mr. Chamberlain, we do not.
I see no one here for that. If you would read the tools.
Whereas the board supervisors of Orange County desire to discuss some closed meetings in the following. Consultation with legal counsel, any actual or probable litigation of such consultation or open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigation process of the body concerning S power. And whereas pursuant to section 2.2371A7, the code of Virginia, this discussion may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved if the board supervisors of Orange County dispute by authorized discussion of forced state matter in closed meeting, need S motion.
I will.
Second. All the table?
I have.
And close.
Cole, can you put the closed meeting screen up, please?
Cole, we're ready to resume the live stream.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for me to certify?
Yes, I am.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Mr. Brain.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
And Mr. Marshall.
Thank you.
You're adjourned.
Second.
You're adjourned.